Welcome to the June 17, 2025, meeting of the University of Rhode Island Board of Trustees, Academic Affairs and Research Committee. The meeting is being held in person with committee members participating remotely. At this time, I will conduct a roll call attendance to determine if a forum is present. Please clearly respond, present via WebEx or present in person when your name is called. Neil Kerwin? Charlie Fogarty? I know he's having technical difficulties, but he's on. Maria Ducharme?
Present via WebEx.
Monica Garans?
Present via WebEx.
Steven Monarano?
Present via WebEx.
Joseph Matthews?
Present via WebEx.
Christine Bovey?
Present via WebEx.
Mark Parlan?
Present via WebEx.
Also in attendance, we have Board Chair Margot Cook and Vice Chair Armin Savatoni. A quorum is present, so I implore the meeting to order. Reminded to all, for the benefit of our audience and the note taker, please clearly identify yourself whenever you comment, make a motion or second a motion. Participants using WebEx are required to keep the cameras on as remote members and all persons present at the meeting location must be clearly audible and visible to each other. At this time, I would like to acknowledge that the University of Rhode Island occupies the traditional stopping ground of the Narvikian Nation and the Niantic People. Are there any proposed amendments to the published agenda? Okay. Hearing none, move to agenda number one, which is the approval of the minutes. May I have a motion that the committee approved the minutes of the April 16, 2025 meeting?
Monica Garans.
Joseph Matthews, so move. Second, Joe Matthews.
Okay, second Joe Matthews. Okay, thank you, Monica and Joe. Any discussion on the motion? There being no discussion, I'll ask for a voice vote. All in favor? Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Any abstentions? Great. The motion to approve the minutes of the April 16, 2025 committee meeting is approved. The next item on the agenda is item number two, report of the chief academic officer. And at this time, I will turn to Dr. Barb Wolf to provide her report, and we do have your presentation ready.
Great, thank you. If we could pull that up. Good afternoon, and it's a delight to be here. And I thought what we would do is I'd give you a little bit of a summary of some overview of what I will present. If we could move to the next slide, please. And what we will do, the next slide, please. Thank you. We have an overview. I just want to highlight the 2025 commencement, a little bit about some highlights related to academic accomplishments over this past semester, a leadership team for federal actions update, as well as update on searches and feasibility study for a possible URI medical school, and then also to just give folks an idea of where we are with our reaccreditation application, which will be forthcoming, just to give you an overview of that. If we could go to our next slide, please. I'm going to start by thanking all of the board members who were able to join us for commencement last month. It was a great celebration. We held eight commencement ceremonies over three days, and all of them occurred in the Ryan Center. It was very exciting, and a special shout out to our incredible student speakers across the different ceremonies. It was really quite invigorating. Commencement, as you know, is a very special weekend for our students and their family and for our faculty and staff, and it's a reminder as to why we're here. So it was a wonderful opportunity for everybody to celebrate the good work that our faculty, students and staff were doing. If we could go to our next slide, please. In terms of highlighting some academic accomplishments, I wanted to share with you that Dean Danielle Dennis from the Dean of the Feinstein College of Education has been named Vice President of the International Literary Association Board of Directors. And this is an organization whose mission is to empower educators through evidence-based practice and advocate for literacy as a fundamental human right. So we're very excited about her sending to this appointment. Also had Dr. Laura Meyerson, who is a professor of natural resource science in our College of Environment and Life Sciences. She actually received her third Fulbright Award, so we're very excited about that. She will be studying the ecology of Iceland's coastline in collaboration with Icelandic Institute of Nature Research. And her goal for her Fulbright trip is to write a proposal for the region to become a Ramsar wetland conservation site, and a wetland designated as being of international importance under the International Ramsar Convention Treaties. We're excited for her. We also have two recent URI graduates who received Fulbright awards. Alyssa Batello, who graduated in 2021, she received a Fulbright, A Thor's Government Open Study Research Award. Another exciting note on Alyssa is her most recent film called Sweet Freedom is debuting at the Rockspur International Film Festival this month. The other Fulbright awardee is Jocelyn Rodriguez, a Ryan scholar on the pre-med track. She graduated this year with degrees in biology and sociology. She deferred medical school after receiving an English teaching award to Portugal, so we're excited for her as well. We also, I want to congratulate Ilani Marias, who received the 2025 Ernest F. Hollings Undergraduate Scholarship, which is the most prestigious scholarship awarded to undergraduates in marine science. Ilani is a sophomore, double majoring in marine biology and ocean engineering. And then at the end of the spring semester, we also celebrated several of the university's annual awards, including academic excellence awards and the research excellence award. And I want to congratulate all of our recipients and the incredible impact that they are having here at URI and beyond. So we're very excited about what people are doing. We could go to the next slide. I want to briefly talk about our leadership team for federal actions. We could advance this slide, please. And this is a team that continues to meet weekly to assess the impact of federal actions on the university. And as I've reported previously, the leadership team primarily focuses on four buckets: research, the status of the Department of Education, also diversity, equity and inclusion, and immigration and international travel. So we send out weekly communications during the semester, and we've now shifted to a as-needed basis over the summer, given the transition of our community. And we will continue to update our federal action website as developments are warranted, and also continue to send out email messages or announcements as needed. On the international and immigration front, I do want to underscore the diligent work that is being done by our Office of Global Initiatives. They are in constant communication with our international community about the latest developments related to immigration and international travel. And regarding the travel ban announced earlier this month, we do not expect that they will have a huge impact at the moment on the university, as much of the ongoing consular delays, that's where we will see impact. The travel bans are about the denial of entry, not termination of current status or existing visas, and folks who are currently here on visas should be okay so long as they do not leave the country. We have been anticipating a low yield for international students, given the uncertainty around immigration issues, and the travel bans contribute to that prediction. We can go to the next slide, please. But I'd also give an update on searches. We are excited to welcome Jean Vandergen to URI as our new dean of the College of Environment and Life Sciences, and she will be starting July 1st. And our search for a university librarian is ongoing, and we hope to wrap that up in the next month. Also, next month, we will be launching a search for a vice provost and dean of the graduate school. That comes about as last fall, we engaged the Council of Graduate Schools consultants to conduct a comprehensive review of our graduate education infrastructure here at URI and to offer strategic insights to its continued growth in camp. So one key recommendation from that final report was to clarify the roles and responsibilities of the graduate school dean. And in response, and with the aim of aligning our graduate education program more closely with peer R1 institutions, we will be elevating that position of a graduate school dean to the role of vice provost and dean of the graduate school, starting with this upcoming search. Also, Brenton DeBooth, he's the dean of the graduate school. He's moved over to serve as interim dean of Archaeology of Arts and Sciences, following the departure of Jen Riley, who was the dean of arts and sciences. She moved on to be provost in the first in camp, so we're excited for her as well. And then replacing Brenton DeBooth in the meantime is Dr. Colleen Mao, who is the associate dean of the graduate school. So she will be serving as acting dean while we undertake a search. Lots of moving parts. We can move up to the next slide, please. We also have updates on the feasibility study, and you will remember that there is a feasibility study that is going on for the possibility of a URI medical school. And Trip Umback is making progress with the feasible study into a possible medical school. Last month, their team presented a concept note to the Legislative Study Commission that proposed a public MD granting medical program that actually emphasizes primary care and community-based training, interdisciplinary training, with strong integration across URI's existing health disciplines, notably nursing, health sciences, pharmacy. I've also included on the slide what the projected startup cost that Trip Umback previewed in their concept note, and as shown here, state support would be critical in launching a medical school and for annual operating costs, in addition to philanthropic support and partnerships with healthcare stakeholders across the state. So Trip Umback will be submitting the final report later this summer, and then that will continue with the commission thereafter. So if we go to the next slide, please. Just a quick update about accreditation. So we are in the early stages of planning our reaccreditation. This is something that our university goes through on a regular basis. And URI is accredited by the New England Commission of Higher Education, or also known as NACI. And we are scheduled to undergo reaccreditation in 2027, and that is a bit away, but there's a lot of planning that goes on in the interim. So as the timeline shows, this is the process for accreditation, and we will be kicking this off this September. Next year, we will be undertaking a self-study, and a preliminary draft of the self-study report will be completed by April 2027, with a final report submitted to NACI in August 2027. And then after that, NACI will visit URI for an accreditation visit in October, an onsite review with a final report in NACI's letter shared with the Board of Trustees February of 2020. And members of the board are certainly as to be involved in the reaccreditation process, and I anticipate sharing more details on that front in our next meeting, and we will also be able to share what the criteria are that we are being evaluated by. So I will stop there. I know we will have a discussion later in this meeting about enrollment, and look forward to that as well. Thank you.
Barb, is there anything different that you think will happen with this accreditation process versus the past, given the change in the Department of Education or anything like that?
Well, I can tell you, yes, in terms of we are anticipating updated criteria for evaluation, and we're waiting for that to be finalized, because that's actually whereby the process that you write your report. So we're looking to see what the standards are, how they have been collapsed or in fact elaborated, and then move forward on that. And my sense is that that may certainly be impacted as to what those look like now by what is going on with the current administration.
It sounds like that's going to be really important to know what they're looking for, just like in our federal grants, like, anyway.
No, exactly.
You know, yeah.
And those should be completed. It's anticipated that the revised criteria will be completed this summer.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, did anyone else have anything to share? Okay, before we move on, Charlie, we see you.
Technology.
So, thank you. And we were just going to move forward with introducing Dr. Bethany Jenkins, so I'll let you take over if you'd like.
All right. Let's see where we are here.
And Bethany does have her slides, and she's planning to share them. She's planning to get her.
All right, report of the research shared, Dr. Bethany Jenkins. She's going to have some research highlights and excellence awards, impact on federal research, and update on efforts regarding facilities and administration. Dr. Jenkins?
Are you guys seeing my slides?
Yeah.
They're going up currently.
There we go.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Okay. You can go to presenter mode. Next slide, please. You all know who I am. Nice to see everybody today. You know, it's been a tough climate with the federal funding, but we've had some really nice research highlights recently at the university. So very recently, we learned that Sarah Brown, a new assistant professor of computer science, she's a specialist in data science, machine learning and artificial intelligence, just got an NSF career award. These are the most prestigious awards that the National Science Foundation give to early career faculty, and so she won a $600,000 award that the university received to look at machine learning through modeling explanations and reflections. And I want to say that Sarah was instrumental in the summit that Barb's office stewarded this fall on artificial intelligence and did a terrific presentation there. So she's knocking it out of the park as a community member and an early career scientist, and this is an area that we expect funding to be growing, so we're really excited to see this award come in. I also want to highlight the fact, I put this up here to make two points. One is I'm absolutely thrilled to have Mark Antonucci and new leadership in the URI Foundation and Alumni Engagement. He's been doing an outstanding job interfacing with the Division of Research and talking to us about how private philanthropy can help research, and I think this is an area that we can expect to see growth, and I'm already seeing really incredible partnership. And so I also wanted to highlight a new award that was received by Melissa O'Mond, who's an associate professor of oceanography. She got money from the Schmidt, you might know that name from Google, the Schmidt Ocean Institute, and their Ocean Maritimes Initiative. And so we received an award for $846,000 through the Schmidt Foundation, and you can see in the background of this picture their RV Felcor research vessels. So again, there are some opportunities out there for private money to come in and support research, and we really are thrilled about that partnership. Next slide. So the other thing I'd like to highlight, some of this is pretty new and breaking news. I know a number of you have been really supportive of the university and the work that we're doing to partner with commercial entities and also really build infrastructure on our Bay campus. So for all of those that have been helping us, we really appreciate it. And I was able to attend and receive this award on behalf of the university in Bristol, Rhode Island, last week. And that was for new innovation campus funding for an ocean technology innovation center. This is going to be really exciting infrastructure on our Bay campus, co-located with our voter-approved buildings that are going up, that will serve as a front door for URI spin-out companies and other commercial partners that want to do work and engage with our faculty and our talent in oceanography and ocean engineering. So we're really thrilled to, you know, it was one of those things where I got the big check like you see at the car dealership, that was kind of fun. So it was a beautiful day, and we're excited to receive this, and I think really keeping the message to our state leadership that they're really important to us right now. We need their partnership, we need their resources in a time when research needs some attention from our state leadership. I was at a panel yesterday up in Boston that I was asked to help steward on behalf of the Rhode Island Life Sciences Hub, and I have to say, the mayor of Providence was there and just did a wonderful job talking about the importance of research in Rhode Island. So I think we have a climate with some of our state leaders and appreciate the partnership, and I think this is an opportunity where our voters, our state government can really be invaluable partners at a time when we're seeing some headwinds in the federal funding landscape. So very appreciative to everybody that's helped. Next slide. You know, this is a question I get, and I'm so proud, and actually Mark asked me this morning, so this is today's data. I'm very pleased to present it. And our faculty continue to knock it out of the park. So this is numbers as of today in terms of proposals submitted in fiscal year '25 submitted to federal agencies, and it's at an all-time high. So this is really important, despite how hard things are and the stories that we're hearing, our people keep trying. And I have to also make the point that we still have the rest of June, and we're ahead. We haven't closed out fiscal year '25, so we're higher than we were last year when our research numbers were at an all-time high. So people are really working hard to seek funding for their research. So we're doing everything we can in the division to help these folks and support these efforts. And you can see, the other thing I really want to make a point about, the staff that works with me and the president and provost have helped support growth last year in staffing at a very critical time, because while we are also dealing with everything coming out of the changing federal landscape, we have also gotten proposals out the door at an all-time high. I'm very, very proud of my team. Next slide. So what we see here is our funding today, and remember our FY24 funding from research that was submitted through the division was at about $146 million. We are seeing a retraction, again, due to a slowdown in new awards and some of the slowdowns in the federal government and the FY25 data, but right now, we're at about $128 million in grants. And one of the reasons I wanted to show this slide, and you can dissect in your own time the different wedges of the wheel here, but that we are still receiving funding across a spectrum of federal agencies, from the National Science Foundation to NIH to DOD. So we're seeing monies move, albeit slightly slower. Next slide. So I want to take a few minutes to talk about a national kind of movement that's afoot, and I will say ahead of getting into the slides, I borrowed these slides from a presentation that I attended last week, and I want to say I'm putting them up there, so those of you that think about how monies move can kind of wrap your brains around this. But you've heard a lot and seen in the headlines in the courts, a lot of movement on indirect costs. At the University of Rhode Island, we, like all of our other peer institutions, negotiate with the federal government for the real cost of doing research, and those come in as facilities and administrative or indirect costs. And our negotiated rate currently is 57.5% of every allowable category that goes into a federal agency. So we negotiate that rate based on real cost. We've had a number of agencies, most of them try to cap that at 15%, and we've been fighting with a number of institutions in terms of legal actions to say, you can't just do this and impose this. So there's been a flurry of court cases against these imposed 15% indirect caps. And so in that intervening time, a number of associations got together and formed this working group called the Join Associations Group to propose alternative models so that we have something more plausible and more supportive of the real cost of doing research than just this 15%. So this group has been very active, and on the next slide, I can highlight who's members of this group. But our Association of Public and Land Grant Universities is part of this, a part of this group, and their goal is to get models in front of Congress that are more plausible than just a 15% cap. Next slide, please. So on this working group, I won't belabor this, are people like myself that are senior research leaders in a variety of R1 and R2 institutions, academic medical centers, people that are experts like Abby Benson in university operations and finance, private foundations, government relations. So it's a whole spectrum of expertise that's come together very quickly to provide some alternative realities to present to our political leaders. Next slide. So they've developed two models that they're calling FAIR models, and these were rolled out last week, and they're asking institutions to test these models. So this is kind of right off the press in terms of how these models, and there are a number of criteria that they develop that they think a good model for the cost of doing research needs. They are trying to eliminate this labor-intensive rate negotiation process that we go through, map things more to project-specific needs, consider all types of research institutions, and then kind of have things be more audible and transparent. Next slide. So this is where it gets in the weeds fast, and I don't want to belabor the mechanics, and I'm sure President Parlan, you'll have a number of questions. Again, this information is very, very new, but why I'm presenting it is just to show you kind of what the two models look like, and when we talk about these indirect costs, what we're talking about. And so this is the first model they presented, where you cost out in a grant anything from the cost of an investigator's salary to graduate students' travel equipment and supplies, okay? This is pretty standard fare for grant budgeting. And then they're trying to come up with a multiplier that is in this bucket of essential research support for research operations, grant management and finance, facilities, research safety, library materials. And so there's a modifier cost, and then if it's specialized research that involves, for example, lots of human subjects, that would get an additional percentage of a modifier, then those two things would come together to form the grant budget in this FAIR model number one. Next slide. So the other model they're considering is much more granular and much more detailed, and that's, again, the project costs, and then the institution breaking out costs associated with research in very specific categories. So again, there's a lot more upfront work to implement this model, but things like safety and security would get a cost, research support and grants management would get a cost, and then there would be a percentage that's general research operations. So there's a lot of data that would go into informing each of these kind of categories to recover those costs in this second, in this second model. So what they're asking the community to do, they released this last week, is to test these models, give them feedback, is there a hybrid that makes more sense? But the real goal is actually to shop this around broadly to our members of our federal House and Senate to get widespread support so that we can legislate an alternative that's better than just a cap at 15% and really reflects the cost of doing research. Next slide. So this is what they're selling to the government and the public as benefits, so less administrative cost, transparency, you can trace the actual costs, so on and so forth. So those are the high-level goals, and we're working very closely with Abby Benson's team and sponsored cost accounting to kind of run these models with URI's data so that we can at least understand them internally and also provide feedback. So we've been working so hard across our institution. And Barb highlighted the work we're doing in the leadership team for federal action. So this has been, you know, taking on, you know, things that are moving at a very fast pace so that we can best position the university to help inform, you know, what we think might benefit our future through this. But these are the alternatives kind of on the street to what are traditionally been called indirect or facilities and administrative costs and the alternative going forward. And this is not a done deal by any stretch of the imagination. It's what the community is putting forward and hoping to get, to get buy-in. So I think that might be my last slide. Let's see if there's another one. Okay. Okay, great. Happy to take any questions. Thank you.
All right, any questions for Bethany?
Hey, this is David Matarano. A quick question on the NIH funding. So from our perspective in prior years, how much has it changed from prior years to now?
Yeah, from prior years to now, we've got about a third, I would say, maybe a third less than we normally see at this time of year. That's from two sources. One is terminated awards. And you might have seen some court decisions saying very recently, NIH, you can't do that. But we're waiting to see how the agency responds to that court hearing. So maybe that some of those awards will be fortuitously reinstated. These investigators competed very hard for those awards. And then we are seeing some slowing in the NIH funding.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Okay, thank you very much, Bethany. And keep an eye on where this is headed, especially at the national level. We have a quorum now?
Yeah, I have one.
Do we, do you want us to take care of the business items and move on?
Actually, we have a quorum, and I started the meeting. So I took care of the first few.
Okay, I'm sorry. So you did have a, all right.
Yep, when David turned on his camera, we were good to go.
All right. So you passed the minutes and all that?
Yes.
All right, so the next item for discussion is the 2025 URI Annual Diversity Report pursuant to Rhode Island General Law 1632, 2.1, our diversity efforts and progress on student, staff, and faculty recruitment. Marquesha Minor, Vice President of Community Equity and Diversity.
Thank you, Vice Chair Fogarty, and thank you all for making time for this annual update. URI is as committed as ever to our, can you all still see me?
Nope, you just went away, Marquesha.
I can hear you, but can you see me?
We could.
No.
Not anymore.
Today is our special day for technology.
There you are.
Okay, great. I can't see you, but you can see me, so the building can proceed. We'll get that fixed. So URI is as committed as ever to our land grant mission to serve and support all learners, to our strategic vision that this board has approved and has outlined in our focus URI strategic vision to, including to foster a people centered, inclusive culture and to our foundational values, including respecting the rights and dignity of all. And so with that, you have the annual report submitted in May pursuant to the statute that Vice Chair Fogarty just shared. It's extensive, so I will not restate it here, but I will provide a few highlights about our efforts to add capacity, to enhance access, and to assess our climate. So first, adding capacity or what I call building a community to build a community. Across the university, we've hired several key positions beyond the Office of Community Equity and Diversity and within. That includes our inaugural Vice President for Human Resources, the first full time Title IX Coordinator, the Director for Community and Organizational Development, who will assist with training efforts, and our first ever coordinator in the Military and Veterans Education Center. This approach has continued to yield results. For example, we were again designated as a top 10 military friendly university. And for the first time, we were designated as a military spouse friendly university in our category, acknowledging the collaborative efforts across many offices here at URI to support our veteran and military connected students. Regarding enhancing access at the number one public university in New England, URI continues to make progress to advance our mission as a land grant university, again, to serve and support all learners. So based on the most recent data available in fall 2024, which is outlined in the report, of our most recent incoming class, 29% are first generation students, the first in their family to earn a bachelor's degree. 27% are from racially and ethnically underrepresented backgrounds. Of the entire student population, over 3,400 are Pell Grant recipients, indicating that they have significant financial need, reflecting our commitment to socioeconomic diversity. 540 students are military affiliated as active duty service members, veterans, spouses, or their dependents. Additionally, 2,453 students, that's a lot, almost 2,500, not quite, are registered with the Disability, Access, and Inclusion Office and receive accommodations. And just over 1,000 students, 1,001 to be exact, participate in our talent development program for high school graduates from Rhode Island with college potential. TD Scholars come from every one of Rhode Island cities, towns, and counties. And we were pleased to celebrate TD Nation reaching more than 5,000 graduates since its inception in 1968 at the May commencement exercises. Regarding faculty composition, 28% of our tenure tenure track faculty are from racially and ethnically underrepresented backgrounds. Just under 50% of our assistant and associate tenure and tenure track professors are women. And 36% of full professors with tenure or on the tenure track are women. And regarding our staff, just over 11% of the staff are racially and ethnically diverse, up from 10.4% a decade ago. And the percentage of women staff has maintained the same as last year at 61%, up from 58% in 2014. Is someone saying something? No. All right. So I'll wrap up with assessing our climate, including retention and belonging. Representation and composition is important, but it's only one aspect of our diversity. Other methods include assessing the climate as indicated by retention efforts and a sense of belonging. Regarding retention through intentional collaboration in fall 2024, CED and Enrollment Services partnered to conduct individual outreach to more than 1,250 continuing students who were not registered for spring classes. As a result of that collaboration, 96% of those identified students were retained, continued their studies, and remained members of the URI community. We're really pleased and proud of that partnership. And then regarding belonging, last year, I reported that we would be working on gathering metrics to assess the effectiveness of our community building efforts with all URI constituents. And I'm pleased to report that we were able to do that. This year, we launched a short seven question SNAP climate survey that was sent to all students, faculty, and staff. We're in the process of reviewing those results and getting feedback from our academic and administrative unit leaders. The survey was short, seven questions, but covered overall experience at the university, sense of belonging, net promoter score, the likelihood that community members would encourage others to teach, study, or work here, and knowledge of available resources, including whether or not community members know whether and how to report concerning conduct. We hope to share those results with the community more broadly very soon. So I just want to say it's a privilege to be at URI and leadership for such a time as this and to continue making progress together. I welcome your questions, and thank you in advance for your patience as I switch cameras here.
Thank you, Marquesha. Questions for Vice President Minor?
I would just say it's a tough time to be in your role, Marquesha. And we appreciate all the work that you do and continuing to be consistent with URI's values. I just appreciate this unique time and remaining true to our mission. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, I inadvertently skipped over number A. A on the discussion items, our review of enrollment management activities outcomes and initial enrollment projections for the academic year 25, 26. Dr. Barbara Wolf, our provost.
Great, thank you. Thank you so much. Oh, no worries. So looking ahead to the upcoming academic year, we wanted to provide the committee with our latest enrollment projections and the impact of some of the changes we've made over the past year regarding enrollment management. And so I am going to turn it over to Dean LeBeauty, who is our Associate Vice President for Enrollment Management and Student Success. But before I do, I do want to commend him and his team for all their work over the past year. And I just want to remind folks that we all know last year was very, very challenging, largely because of the difficulties related to PAFSA. The good news is that those difficulties did not repeat themselves this year. And our financial A team was able to send out packages ahead of schedule. So we're very excited about that. And as Dean will discuss in more detail, not only did we hit our enrollment target this year, but we did so without going to our waitlist, provide or proving to be the only public flagship in New England, which this was the case. So most public flagships went deep into their waitlist this year. So we were very successful, and that was really truly teamwork of many, including Dean's team, but also the colleges, the deans, the faculty, and the staff. So it really takes a village. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dean.
Thank you, Provost Wolf, and good afternoon, everyone. I just have a few slides to share. But while those are coming up, I do want to again mention record year in applications, over 28,000. We will be exceeding our first year target this fall, which is very exciting. Our target was 3275, and I look forward to giving you that target this coming fall. And I do have a couple of slides if they are going to be coming up by chance.
Hey, Dean, this is David Matarano. Any way we can market the ability that we didn't let anybody off the waitlist?
So we are.
Very discreetly, obviously, but that's a great statistic.
Yeah, you know, I will say that I am cautiously working hard with our teams to make sure we don't have a strong summer melt. I don't know if you saw the New York Times this past weekend with the article on Syracuse University offering $50,000, $60,000, $70,000 scholarships to people past May 1 to join them. So I am humbly hiding about well, how well we did in some ways, but gearing up for a big bang for next year's class. So summer melt really does matter. I think I might have some slides coming up, but if not, I can also share what I have.
Feel free to share what you have. We don't have your slides, so feel free to share them.
I can do that. All right. Are you able to see this by chance? All right, I see a nod from David. Thank you. So let's talk about some other enrollment we normally don't talk about. So first year enrollment looks great. Summer enrollment, summer is a vibrant time for the community. We have over 8,000 student enrollments this summer, the highest in well over 10 years at URI, thanks to the great work of Dr. John O'Leary, Kat Moniz, and team. Really exciting to see a record summer enrollment happening at the university. Right now, we're in the middle of summer orientation with nine orientation sessions the month of June. In fact, tomorrow is a transfer day with several hundred students. Today, we had just under 500 new students on campus. So June is a vibrant time for us to reaffirm a student's commitment, welcome them and their families, get them registered for classes, get them set up for technology. We talked about new first year undergraduate enrollment looks quite strong, as does transfer. Our transfer enrollment is currently running plus 45 year over year. We have over 450 transfer deposits, and that is ahead of schedule where we hope to land this coming September. All great signs. And then URI Online is making some great waves. And I'm going to be sharing that with you in a little bit to show you visually. But I'm really excited about some of the things that are happening. So what's going on with enrollment strategy? This meeting, I need to give you an update on some of the things. Number one, we did a lot of invigorated changes to how we talk about the university. So David, this actually kind of goes to what are we doing and how are we bragging? And so the number one, Wall Street Journal, number one, R1 status, four plus one bachelors to masters programs, from the president on down, we had a very strong message. And how I know it worked is when we asked students why they came to URI, it was amazing how they talked about the community in all those ones. And so it was really nice to see that the strength of our rankings be pulled through such a strong class. We're doing some new things in AI. And while I won't share them all, I will actually show you in a little bit what one actually looks like. AI can play a really key role in reaching people that are far away from Rhode Island. Number three, the push beyond New England. We know we have to get beyond New England and even the mid Atlantic. So look at some of these numbers in application growth. Maryland, 26%. Virginia, plus 13%. DC, 167%. Georgia, up 83%. North Carolina, Tennessee, Illinois, Ohio, California, Texas, and Colorado. And we have many other markets we were up, but these are just some of the ones that are newer areas that you normally don't see me talking about. Great work by our admission team, our recruiters, and everyone really working to get the word out there. Cindy Bond, our Dean of Admission, actually has retired after over 20 years. And we are in the search for a new executive director to work with us. And this summer, we're really being spent on analyzing our data, assessing our competitors, and building a new model for next year. And that's just kind of some of the strategy on the undergrad side. Just two more slides for you. Any by chance anywhere of the Rhode Islanders see these billboards? Pretty exciting to see. URI Online, whether it be Logan Airport, the train station, TF Green, the billboards, media, and more, with over 40 online programs. We're really excited to say that we're going to have an MBA fully online, a Master's of Public Health, and a DNP, a Doctor of Nursing Practice. The online team led by Heather Sharp Smith and our great deans are working hard to build new programs and also working with our graduate school. Other things on the grad side, we're talking a lot about our four plus ones or accelerated to bachelors to masters. Over 1,000 students in our incoming class mentioned that they would like to continue on with us and talk and consider taking a plus one master's degree. That was part of our marketing to bring the best and brightest to the university and have them think well beyond just undergraduate. It's nice to see that number. And if we can turn that into enrollment in a couple of years, that's a great sign. Our leadership of the graduate school, as Barb mentioned, there's some changes happening, but the team has been working very hard currently. And then the grad schools also brought on a CRM called SLATE. SLATE is a, it's a customer relations management system that we use at the undergrad side. And I'm really pleased to see the work that Corinne and others have done on using SLATE to communicate with our graduate markets in ways we never did. And finally, how about a little fun today? Meet Keeney. This is URI's first and newest member of the admission team that is an AI generated person. They are, her name is Keeney, of course, named after our Keeney color, which means success and happiness, and that was created in a lab many, many years ago by Frank Keeney. Keeney can speak multiple languages. She can talk over the phone, text, direct messaging, email. Her conversations are customized based on the knowledge and interests of the people that she's talking to. This is through a platform known as Collegevine that has over 1 million prospective students on it. Most of the conversations happen between 8:00 PM and overnight when we're all sleeping and doing other things. Most of the conversations happen between 8:00 PM and overnight when we're all sleeping and doing other things. And we get a summary back of what are the important issues to that person that Keeney is working on. So, it's a great way to build prospects in a very exciting way. Keeney was trained by over hundreds of URI websites, documents, personal interviews with faculty, staff, and students. And I challenge anyone to know as much about URI that Keeney does. And this will be part of our new strategy over the next couple of years. And I really want to thank the leadership for working with us on bringing Keeney on board. In case you're wondering, Keeney was actually developed by a student named April, with many students and faculty representing how Keeney's voice, style, and look would be for prospective students. And that is my update, and I look forward to seeing any questions you might have.
Wow. Thank you, Dean. Questions for Dean Labuti? I guess, will Keeney be present at next week's dinner at the President's House before our our board meeting?
You know, Keeney could be present. Fortunately, it does not require sitting at the table, but if anyone would like to have a conversation, let me know. It's pretty incredible to see what you can do with great partnerships. And our faculty were amazing at giving Keeney the stories and voices of the classroom. So, I can't wait to show you all how we unveil this over the next couple of years. It's very exciting.
Thank you. Dean, a quick question. Do you have a break? I know we'll get a more final number in our for our September meeting. But do you have an approximate breakdown of the incoming class that's accepted thus far who are from Rhode Island? Percentage?
I do. I do. We I expect us to bring in about 3,300 plus first year students. Our percentage of in-state students will be just over 40%. I expect we'll bring in around 1,250 to 1,300 new students. First year, transfer students, we will bring in about 500 students. And over 70% of those will be from Rhode Island. So, when you put the two together, new students for first year and transfers will probably be around 45, 47% in-state would be where I think we'll end up in a couple of months.
Thank you. Questions for Dean?
Yeah, and Dean, on that topic, is it the 40% that's coming in from the state freshman year? Is it this lack of applicants or its quality of students?
It I'm going to actually pick item number three if I can, Dave, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Say it's it should be 200 higher if we had a Promise Hope Scholarship-type program. So, we actually received a decent number of applications, about 4,400 applications. But that number should be about 200 higher than what it currently is. And, you know, and I know we've talked about that before, but you just continue to see that movement over to C-SR and Rick on that. And so, while the number of high school grads in Rhode Island is not as strong, our yields should be much better. And on the high achieving students in Rhode Island, if they don't attend URI, they're actually leaving Rhode Island at record rates. And so, we've been sharing some of those data as well to show what's happening there. So, those other challenges you mentioned certainly don't help us, but we still should. I should be bringing in 1,450 to 1,500 Rhode Islanders. And we're working on that very hard.
Thank you.
Charlie, if I may, to Dean, this is Joe Matthews. When you speak about the transfer students, Dean, is does that include the CCRI contingent? And what's that breakdown looking like?
Yeah, sure. Still in development, so we will bring in over 500 transfer students this fall from over 100 different institutions. However, the vast majority, the majority will be from the Community College of Rhode Island. The last time I looked, over 70% of our Rhode Island transfers coming in were from CCRI, and we really have a wonderful relationship there, building new programs. In fact, we just launched a transfer pathway from CCRI into our pharmacy program. So, we have a great relationship there. Not as many students as we would like, but we're always trying to make it better with our teams and keeping the communication open.
Other questions for Dean? Well, you know, given all the demographic trends and the smaller high school graduating classes, the greater competition, and also fewer people at a national level who are proceeding on to higher education. You've done a remarkable you and your team have done a remarkable job. And we hope the summer melt away does not melt very much.
I would agree, and we really have a wonderful community effort. Last thing I'll just say, if I may, we had a celebration of our numbers the day after May 1. And it was amazing to see well over 100 people from the president and the provost and vice presidents to faculty coming over. And we unveiled the class, and it's amazing how many people at URI care about enrollment, undergrad and grad, and that is something that's a rarity. So, we're fortunate to I have a wonderful team, but it's really wonderful to have a great university who gets it and celebrates that. And I think that's our secret sauce that many people cannot duplicate out there. So, I want to thank our community who might be listening for their involvement.
Thank you. Any other questions for Dean? All right, if not, that we'll move on. Our next item is the executive session. Excuse me. The committee may seek to enter executive session for the following item. Discussion regarding a matter related to the question of investment of public funds, which includes any investment plan or related matters thereto, where the premature disclosure would adversely affect the public interest pursuant to Rhode Island General Law 42465A7, specifically research support from partner organizations. So, may I have a motion that the committee convene into executive session pursuant to Rhode Island General Law 42465A7 for discussion regarding a matter related to the question of investment of public funds, which includes any investment plan or matters related thereto, where the premature disclosure would adversely affect the public interest, specifically research support for partner organizations? Is there someone willing to make that motion?
Maria, move the motion. Sorry, David, go ahead.
No, David Matarano second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? There being no discussion, I'm going to ask for a voice vote. All those in favor, say yes. Opposed, no?
Yes.
Yes.
Any abstentions? If not, it was unanimous? Okay, the committee will now convene into executive session for the reasons specified earlier. It's anticipated the executive session will last for approximately 15 minutes, after which the committee will reconvene in open session. The live stream will be paused during the executive session and will resume once the executive session has ended and the committee reconvenes in open session. For all those participating via WebEx, please confirm by saying yes that there is no other person present and are able to hear the discussion at your remote location.
Yes.
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 If you do not automatically move to the breakout session, join the session when prompted on your computer by clicking the join now button. Attendees not participating in the executive session will be moved to a waiting room. Okay.
We're live.
Charlie, you're on mute.
You're on mute, Charlie.
There we go. Sorry about that. So the committee has now reconvened in open session. The first order of business is a motion to seal the executive session minutes. May I have a motion? That the minutes of the committee's... Joe Matthews moved. Is there a second?
Monica Garnett, second.
Second, any discussion on the motion? There being no discussion, I'm going to ask for a voice vote. All those in favor, please say yes. Yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Any abstentions? All right, the motion is approved unanimously. Our next item on the agenda is action items, item. And that's number one, the approval of the granting of tenure effective July 1, 2025 to the incoming dean of the College of Environment and Life Sciences, Dr. John Vandergenst, who has met the requirements for tenure at the University of Rhode Island, and recommendation to the Board of Trustees, Dr. Wolf.
Yeah, as the action item says, we're looking for the recommending the granting of tenure for Dr. Vandergenst, who is coming again here as the dean of cells. She served recently as the dean at UMass Dartmouth for their College of Engineering and also the interim dean at their School for Marine Science and Technology. And before that, she served in leadership roles at the University of California, Davis, is very familiar with land brand institutions. And we're very excited to have her join URI.
Okay, may I have a motion that the committee recommend that the board approve the granting of tenure effective July 1, 2025 to the incoming dean of the College of Environment and Life Sciences, Dr. Vandergenst, who has met the requirements for tenure at URI as recommended in the enclosure.
Monica Garnett, so moved.
Is there a second?
David Monarano, second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? There being none, I'm going to call for a voice vote. All those in favor, please say yes. Yes?
Yes.
Yeah.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right, the motion is approved unanimously. The next item. Approval of the annual granting of tenure for University of Rhode Island faculty members effective July 1, 2025, or as specified in recommendation to the URI Board of Trustees, Dr. Wolf.
Yes, so this year we are recommending 27 faculty per tenure. In addition, we are recommending tenure for three new hires who are joining us as faculty members. And all individuals have gone through a rigorous peer review process in terms of the 27 faculty. And the three individuals who are joining us from outside are coming to us. And joining the Harrington School of Communication as well as the Department of Psychology, actually as chair of the Department of Psychology. Thank you.
Okay, may I have a motion that the committee recommend that the board approve the granting of tenure effective July 1, 2025, or as specified to the designated faculty members who have met the requirements for tenure at the University of Rhode Island as recommended in the enclosure?
Joe Matthews, don't move.
Second.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Is there a second to the motion? There's been made, a motion made and seconded. Any discussion? There being no discussion, I'll ask for a voice vote. All in favor, please say yes. Yes?
Yeah.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the motion is unanimously approved. The next item. The review and approval of legislation from the Graduate Council, number 24, 2024-2025-07C, College of Engineering, organizational change to create a new degree program, Master of Engineering, Management and Leadership, which has been approved by the faculty and president of the University of Rhode Island, and recommendation to the Board of Trustees, Dr. Wolf.
Great, thank you. We are asking the committee to recommend that the board approve three new degree opportunities, starting with the Masters of Engineering, Management and Leadership. And this program is designed for practicing engineering professionals and it is an interdisciplinary program that is developing in collaboration between our College of Engineering and College Business and bridges the gap between engineering and management. And the program integrates leadership and business acumen with the advanced technical skills required to excel in today's technology-driven industries.
Any questions for Dr. Wolf? If not, may I have a motion that the committee recommend that the board approve legislation recommended by the Faculty Senate and the President, providing a new degree opportunity, Master of Engineering, Management and Leadership, as recommended in the enclosure?
Monica Garnett, so moved.
David Monarano, second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? There being no discussion, I'm going to ask for a voice vote. All those in favor, please say yes. Yes?
Yeah.
Opposed? No? Any abstentions? All right, the motion passes unanimously. Next item for approval. Review and approval of legislation from the Graduate Council, number 2425-08C, College of Arts and Sciences, organizational change to create a new program, PhD in Computational Social Science, Doctorate Degree Program, which has been approved by the faculty and the president of the University of Rhode Island, and the recommendation to the Board of Trustees, Dr. Wolf.
Great, thank you. We're recommending that the board approve a new computational social science doctorate degree program. This is an interdisciplinary program and integrates advanced computational methods with social science theory to analyze complex social, political, and economic phenomena. And this program prepares graduates for careers in government, industry, nonprofit organizations, and academia. Thank you.
Any questions for Dr. Wolf? If not, may I have a motion that the committee recommend that the board approve legislation recommended by the Faculty Senate and President, providing a new degree opportunity, Doctor of Computational Social Science Program, as recommended in the enclosure?
So moved.
Joseph Matthews, so moved?
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? There being none, I'm going to ask for a voice vote. All those in favor, please say yes. Yes?
Yeah.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? All right, the motion is approved unanimously. Next item, review and approval of legislation from the Faculty Senate, Curriculum and Standards Committee, report, 2425-09C, College of Arts and Sciences, organizational change to create a new program, Bachelor of Arts Degree in Environmental Arts and Humanities, which has been approved by the faculty and the president of the University of Rhode Island, with a recommendation to the Board of Trustees, Dr. Wolf.
Great, thank you. We are recommending that the board approve this program. The degree will provide our graduates with critical reasoning skills and applied learning opportunities to position them for a variety of professions, including science writing, environmental policy, nonprofit work focused on environmental problems and solutions, graduate school for environmental law or environmental philosophy, and other professions working to address the environmental issues. Thank you.
Thank you. May I have a motion that the committee recommend that the board approve legislation recommended by the Faculty Senate and President, providing a new degree opportunity, Bachelor of Arts, Environmental Arts and Humanities Program, as recommended in the enclosure?
Monica Garnett, so moved.
David Monarano, second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? There being none, I'm going to ask for a voice vote. All those in favor, please say yes. Yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Any abstentions? The motion is approved unanimously. Next item, the approval of the awarding of a posthumous degree, academic degree at the fall commencement, 2025. And recommendation to the URI Board of Trustees, Dr. Wolf.
Thank you. I have the sad duty to request the approval of the Board of Trustees for the awarding of this posthumous academic degree. For Mr. Timothy Howard from the College of Arts and Science for a bachelor's and communications studies. Thank you.
Any, any questions for Dr. Wolf? If not, may I have a motion that the committee recommend that the board approve the awarding of a posthumous academic degree at the fall commencement, 2025. To Mr. Timothy Howard, College of Arts and Sciences, as recommended in the enclosure.
So moved, Maria Dusharm.
A second?
Monica Garn, second.
Any discussion on the motion? There being none, I'm going to ask for a voice vote. All those in favor, please say yes. Yes?
Yes.
Yeah.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, the motion is approved unanimously. Next item is our adjournment. I think we've completed our session today. May I have a motion to adjourn?
David Monarano, so move.
Is there a second?
Joseph Matthews, second.
Okay, any discussion on the motion? There being no discussion, I'm going to ask for a voice vote. Those in favor, please say yes. Yes?
Yes.
Yeah.
Opposed? No? Any abstentions? All right, the motion is approved. The next URI Trustees Academic Affairs and Research Committee is tentatively scheduled for September, 2025. Hope to see you all next week at our June board meeting and retreat. Thank you all.